Mr. Chair, we are good to go.
Good to go?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment today? Okay, hearing none. We have a board meeting agenda. Andrew, is there any changes or updates to it?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll move the agenda as presented, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmidt has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Andrew, if you would run through the consent agenda, please.
Yes, we have approval of the August fifth board meeting minutes. Approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable. Approval of a temporary on-sale liquor license for the Cedar Mills Gun Club. A resolution approving the Cedar Mills Lions off-site gambling application. Approval of a quote from Marco for the purchase of switches, hardware, and licensing. And approval of the two thousand twenty-five through twenty-seven strategic plan.
Okay, are there any questions for Andrew about? Yes, Steve.
Mr. Chair, Andrew, there's an air handling unit in the payables is like a final payment for like eleven grand. Is that a part of construction?
I will determine which one that is. There have been several air handlers that have been
That's why I was just curious.
recent years. So I'll figure out which one that is and I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my only questions.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a question about Marco. Do we, are we under contract with them so we use them? Do we bid these switches anywhere else or we just use them automatically?
I have received quotes from other entities. They've all pretty much run the same.
But normally we do, I know it was budgeted, but you've got quotes before.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any item that you wish to have moved to the full agenda? Okay, we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. This, however, contains a resolution.
I'm sorry, we need
Heat a motion.
Okay, I didn't think we had one.
Mr. Chair, I would vote to make a motion. We're getting off to a great start, to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll vote the second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg, seconded by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This consent agenda does contain a resolution, so therefore we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, Holly Nelson, property records and taxation and elections manager.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first piece we are doing is appointing of county commissioners to the canvas board. So we need two commissioners and we have two elections this year that we will have canvassing boards. The first one will be here in August on the twenty-seventh and the second will be November fifth.
Holly, just one question. Are all of us currently certified and have, or is somebody expired and need to re?
Yep, any of you are available to do it because you will not be on the ballot. If you were on the ballot, then you wouldn't be able to do it. You could be appointed to it, but then you would have to designate to another individual.
What did you say the dates were again?
Wednesday, August twenty-seventh at nine a.m. and Wednesday, November fifth at ten a.m. Yeah, it does.
I would be available for that if. Looking for names to fill the blanks.
Volunteer number one.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else who is interested?
I think we should volunteer Darren since he's probably, he should experience like all the rest of the
I think you've been on one, haven't you, Steve?
I've done.
And you have, and I have, so if you would like to.
I have never done it, so.
And they survive.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so we will have, I'm looking for a motion then to appoint and then you will, whoever makes the motion will insert Cheryl Van Ort, Commissioner Cheryl Van Ort and Commissioner Darren Samke to that motion. So whoever would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to appoint Cheryl Van Ort and Darren Samke to the canvas board appointments.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Your second item.
The second piece we have is approval of the resolution to establish the absentee ballot board for two thousand twenty-five. So we will need those currently here for just the two elections again for the special for Senate District Twenty-nine and then for November's as well. We, for the auditor, we establish the Yowakawa and then the county board is who establishes the absentee ballot board. We would like to keep them all the same on both, so every individual that comes in looks at both and it's not two different ballot boards. And that will consist of individuals who are trained for election staff and we will also do the current staff we have. We have a few other offices that are trained that will come too and then election judges from local precincts.
Holly, how many do you think you're going to need?
It depends on how many people come out and vote. I know on here we have twenty-five to thirty. I know currently this week we haven't had any yet. Because we have voting going on right now until next Tuesday for Kingston and Kingston Township for the Senate District Twenty-nine.
Any questions for Holly? If not, I would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution and direct Meeker County Election Manager to establish an absentee and Yowakawa ballot board. That would consist of sufficient number of trained and qualified election judges and trained deputy election staff to perform the required tasks for all elections to be held in two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This is also a resolution, so we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Holly.
Thanks, Holly.
Now we'll have Phil Smalls, our Public Work Director.
Glad I keep in line with the theme and have another resolution for you. Hi, everybody. Consider a resolution requesting that MINDOT complete a speed study on Casaw One. The segment we're looking at is about a three-mile-long stretch from five hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue to two hundred and seventieth Street on the west and southwest side of Litchfield. It's a stretch of road we've been watching for a while. So, and we had some public feedback requesting that we take a look, so we thought it was time to ask MINDOT to complete the study. If you're not aware, MINDOT is responsible for setting speed limits. We don't set our own. They have statutory authority over that on our roads. The idea is statewide consistency with speed limits. So the process will be if we approve this resolution, they'll complete the study and we're bound to post the results of their study. Currently, this entire stretch is posted at fifty-five miles an hour.
Can you, can you give me, is there a business close? I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Concerns we have are related to some substandard curves that have advisory speeds posted, access density. There's a number of homes kind of in the middle of this stretch that have driveways onto Casaw One.
Okay.
So.
Is that the piece that kind of runs along the golf course and over the railroad tracks?
Yes.
And up to?
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yep, the northern limits, there's a map in your pack. The northern limit is the T where Casaw Eleven
Right at my house.
is very clean road, some people call it. And the southern limit is you, it's three miles south, southwest. You come around the curves, around the lake and head west about another mile.
Yep.
So we're looking at that entire stretch.
I still wasn't putting it together till right now. I got it now. Okay, that is, I would agree that's probably needed.
Yes.
So I move to approve resolution requesting MINDOT complete a speed study on portions of Casaw One and Casaw Eleven.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Olberg and a second by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution, Corey.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. So all you got for us today, huh?
Simple.
All right, thank you. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Oh, no.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning I got three items for you. The first one will be Wagner Dairy Biogifter and Feedlot change, Feedlot manure change. And those are conditional use permits one six six three five and one six six three six. This site is located in Section Twenty-eight, Township One Twenty, Range Thirty, Forest City Township. It's going to be located on parcel zero nine zero two nine four zero 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 and zero nine nine dash zero two nine seven zero zero zero. Facilities of Class B feedlot located in portions of two parcels which are, which total one hundred and fifty-five acres. Biodigester will be located approximately twenty-one point nine acres in the southwest seventy-five acre parcel. Feedlot was originally permitted in two thousand, received a conditional use permit in two thousand and five to expand up to four hundred and eighty animal units. Conditional use permit was passed in two thousand thirteen to expand to four hundred and ninety-nine animal units. Two thousand fourteen to expand to seven hundred and eighty-four units. It may have two thousand twenty-one to see if it was passed to expand to maximum nine hundred and ninety animal units. Applicants are proposing to change, to change, to change the manure storage lagoon operation of the feedlot for the biodigester to capture raw natural gas that is produced from the anaerobic digester process. Change your manure handling for the operation of the biodigester or route the manure to the digester. Manure will then move processed facilities to be dispensed into site storage to digestate. Product can be used as fertilizer and the site will have sufficient capacity within the basins to accommodate animal units, manure, and the industrial food byproducts used for biodigestion process. New facilities for this biodigestion to be built for this project are a solid separation building, hydrolysis tanks, anaerobic digester tanks, manure storage tanks, boiler, backup generator, biogas upgrader, a flare, technical containers, buffer tanks, payload area, truck scale, and reception area, propane tank, transformer, air treatment, food by processing receiving location, digestate, and a digestate storage base and analytical distribution. The raw natural gas that is produced will be digested off and upgraded through the system that will remove impurities such as H two S, carbon dioxide, and trace VOCs. Excess CO2 will exit through the tail gas stack of the biogas upgrader. Anaerobic digestion is established method for treatment of manure and prevent odor production since anaerobically digested manure produces significantly less odor than untreated liquid manures. Final ruling from the MPC for the EAW that was released on August twelfth for this project, two thousand twenty-five. The Minnesota Police Control Agency determined that there were no potential significant environmental effects reasonably expected to occur from the Vanguard Renewables Litchfield eighty-one facility. There is no certain environmental impact statement. You can tell from the hearing summary, there's a large number of people that were here. Mostly inquisitive on what the nature of the project was going to be. Vanguard was here, represented by Steve Ly Burton, who's here in the Hovens, and Wagner's are here as well as well as others from Vanguard to answer most of those people's questions during the hearing. As you can tell from my summary here. There'll be two things you'll have to vote on in this one. One will be the manure handling process and then the other will be on the biodigestion, actual facility.
So Greg, at that hearing, do you feel that everyone had their questions adequately answered?
I believe so. Yeah, there wasn't anybody that seemed to be upset at the end of the day when it got passed.
So it was a very informational meeting? Okay.
And the Monday before the meeting, last Tuesday, myself, Commissioner Cheryl Van Ort and Planning Commission Chair Greg Janz and myself went out and visited a similar type facility in Wisconsin. So ahead of time to kind of get more technical questions during the hearing, so.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, Greg, so is this similar as far as on the zoning side of it? Will this facility kind of be mapped out? Will that parcel where the process is being done be zoned in commercial? Is there any change to that? Kind of like a solar or it's still?
Still agriculture.
Okay, I know there's sometimes different, like for solar, they survey them out and then that's that parcel or that piece is zoned commercial and that
It's tax commercial, it's not zoned commercial. Solar wind is still agriculture, it's zoned as tax.
Okay, is this that, do you know if this is that? That's what I was
Not sure, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I haven't asked that to the assessor if they're going to zone a part of it as commercial or not, I haven't.
Okay, I know the production, that production piece is always a question.
So that'll be determined.
Other than that, I mean, my only other comment, I stopped out at the farm and actually I talked to Justin on the phone after that. And everything, I think they're on a good operation. Everything's nice and clean and well-kept and all, everything I've read here that's been presented to us, I don't see anything that's going to change that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I thought it was very valuable to go to the site and see how that site would operate. You know, because this is my, my area or my township, I've had lots of calls on it and those concerns were all well answered. Concerning odor and, and the roads and those things, and those things are being addressed. Vanguard will be taking care of the road upgrades. There's very minimal odor, potentially even less than you have with, with the manure on site. And very safe. So I, I thought that they answered things well and there was, it was full here, but it went very well. People had their questions answered and so, yes.
Other comments or questions or?
No, can I make a motion?
Well, I just want to clarify, Greg, you had asked, you said you had two things, but I believe there will be three motions.
There'll be two motions, yeah. One for conditional use permit one six six three five, and that's to construct the aerobic digester. And conditional use permit one six six three six, and that's to change the feedlot manure handling at the location.
Okay, so that
I'm sorry.
In our backup, the one is on it. I got that pre-worked on it.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use permit application one six six three five to construct and operate an anaerobic digester to produce raw natural gas within the A-one agricultural preservation district in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-eight Township One Twenty, Range Twenty, and Forest City Township.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the second motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use permit application one six six three six to change the feedlot manure handling at the site located within the A-one agricultural preservation district in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-eight Township One Twenty, Range Twenty, and Forest City Township.
Okay, Commissioner Van Ort has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries.
Good luck.
The next item I have is for approval of a resolution to advertise the conveyance of property one six seven oh one, two hundred and ninety-third Street, Litchfield, Minnesota, located Section Thirty Township One Twenty, Range Thirty, Forest City Township. And this is to, after a meeting with the Waste Management Commissioners and County Administrator in July eighth twenty-five, it was determined that you remember, we tried to send out RFPs for new operation contract for the site. So after we got the bids back in, it was determined July eighth that we would explore other options than having a new operator at the site. And with that came some inquiries from some individuals about possibly purchasing the site. So with that, this resolution allows us to go back like we did in twenty-three to advertise for sale of the property in order to provide continuous service for citizens of Meeker County, that will be for the county. So the first step in the sale of the property, we have to approve this resolution to authorize staff to advertise for bids in the local media. This resolution establishes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the advertising for bids for the property located at six three seven oh one, two hundred and ninety-third Street, Litchfield, Minnesota.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Discussion?
I feel I'm all discussed out on this one already. We've
We've discussed out too. It feels like it's all
We've worked on this for a while, so we're ready for another new step. So let's see where this leads.
All right, hearing no discussion, we'll call the question and of course it's a resolution, so Corey, if you would, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Greg. IT Specialist Rob. I guess director, not specialist.
Director Rob. Good morning.
Morning.
So our IT department, very small, consists of just the three of us, myself, Laura Beach, and Lou Naniskan. Between the three of us, we manage to support approximately two hundred and sixty users and we've broken down those users in the following slides. This breaks down our Meeker County Justice Center. Eighty of our users are part of the Meeker County Sheriff's Office. Eleven of them are part of Litchfield Police Department and ten of those are with the Attorney's Office. And the next slide, we have approximately a hundred and thirty users within the government center. Those are all broken down within the departments that you see on the slide there.
Rob, if I may ask, when you say users, is that, like, some folks have got two separate computers, a desktop and a laptop? Are they counted as one user or?
They are counted as one user.
Okay.
Yep. And then on the next slide, we can see that we support thirty-one users at highway. And then we also support some remote offices. One is in Watkins, one in Dassel, and one in Eden Valley. And then on the next slide, we just break down some of the end-user devices that we support. We support approximately three hundred computers. A large percentage of those are laptops. And most of those laptops are used for remote access by users in both the government center and the law enforcement center. Those laptops also include the squad computers that are used for both the sheriff's office and the Litchfield Police Department. So our number one, our number one thing with those is, is security because of the information that they're transferring back and forth. We also support, when I originally put the slide together, we estimated about a hundred, but in looking further, we actually support in excess of a hundred and seventy-five printers and scanners. Those include anything from squad printers to desktop printers and scanners and all the way up to large function, or large multi-function devices. We support approximately a hundred and fifteen cell phones and iPads. We utilize mobile device management on these devices. That allows us to do things such as performing a remote wipe if the device is lost or stolen. We can control the apps that are, that the user has access to. They're not, they're not able to just go out and install any random app. That's just to prevent installing an app that might contain malicious software. We've also had some success in locating misplaced devices using mobile device management. And then we also support forty-two Meraki wireless access points. These devices are throughout all of our locations. They broadcast several secure SSIDs that provide wireless access to, to every department. We do provide one open wireless SSID that's accessible by the public. And we then have several other SSIDs that I don't want to really provide any more information on in a public meeting. There was a slide previous to this one. I believe you all have a copy of our network diagram. I decided to pull that from the, from the public viewing because there's some information on there that probably is also best not seen by the public. But that slide shows the complexity of our network infrastructure. You can see on it that we support two firewalls. One's primary, one's a secondary. In case one goes down or we have to do maintenance, we can, we can, we're always live. We can work off of one or the other. And then we support twenty-seven network switches. These switches provide network connectivity and security to all of the remaining devices on our network. And then in addition to the things that are shown in the diagram, we also support all of the hardware and storage that makes up our virtual environment, which currently consists of approximately thirty-two virtual servers. Those include file servers, print servers, and application servers. And then we also have several physical servers. Five of those control our one hundred and fifty-five surveillance cameras that are throughout all of our buildings. And they store all of the related video. Three of those physical servers are also used to store and control squad and body cam video for both the sheriff's office and the Litchfield Police Department. And then the next slides, I'm just going to highlight some of the software that's used countywide. Microsoft M three sixty-five, we're actually just in the process of converting users to this new licensing, which provides us with the following features, one being that the desktop and web versions of office apps are available to everybody. These apps will always be current versions of the apps and can be installed on five devices per user. The significance of the always current apps is we've previously run standalone office software. We're currently on two thousand nineteen. Previous to that, we were on two thousand and ten. But once we put those in place, we're basically running that version of software until we go to the next version. With the Microsoft, with the M three sixty-five licensing, we'll always be able to update if there's a, if there's a new patch, if there's a new feature, we'll always be up to date. It also gives us security and compliance features. These include conditional access. Conditional access gives us the ability to control access based on various conditions such as regional restrictions. We can put restrictions in place where if somebody's trying to access an email account from our country, it's going to see that and it's going to block access unless, say, we know somebody's leaving, we can put a, we can, you know, make an exception while that person's gone, but for the most part, it wouldn't allow them. We can also deny access to a device with any out-of-date operating system. We can deny access for specific times of day if we have employees that we know only work from, you know, eight to four thirty and would never log in, we can restrict to those times. So if somebody's trying to get into their account at three in the morning, it's going to see that and block it. It provides advanced threat protection such as anti-phishing, anti-spam, and anti-malware. It's got real-time monitoring and detection which continuously monitors for threats such as malicious attachments and links. And then it provides us with automated investigation and response, which can help us streamline the process of investigating and responding to any threats that happen. And then it provides us with identity protection, which can help identify compromised or leaked credentials and other suspicious user activities. Examples of those might be someone, again, who's logging and trying to log in at three in the morning or from an unexpected location. Most of these features are, are going to help us not only provide extra security, but they're going to help us to be compliant with BCA and IRS audits and mandates. But of course, we've just made the jump to M three sixty licensing, and we have a large learning curve ahead of us. So it's going to take some time to put all these features in place. So hopefully, in a year, when we're making this presentation again, I can tell you that we've jumped into a lot of these features. The next slide is Veeam. Veeam is our data backup software. We utilize Veeam to take daily backups of all of our servers. These backups are stored not only on local storage, but they're, they're pushed to the cloud as, in what's called immutable backups. An immutable backup is data that can't be modified or deleted by anybody, even me, until our retention policies up, we currently have a retention policy of those immutable backups of two years. So in those two years, nobody can, that data can't be deleted. It protects against ransomware, accidental deletion, and malicious attacks. We also keep archives on-site of the eight most recent weekly, the eight, the thirteen most recent monthly, and the two most recent yearly backups. So if something happens to last week's backup, we can always go back. So.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. So we have an onsite backup, and then this is an additional backup, so we have two backups?
We have two backups. We have the onsite backup, which if we need to recover something, we can recover something as simple as I accidentally deleted a file. Can you recover it for me? I accidentally deleted a folder to a server that crashes. If we have that onsite backup, that's a lot quicker to recover that data. But those backups are, are pushed to the cloud, and they're immutable. So if our data domain, which is the software we use for doing our onsite backups, if that were to fail, we could always go to the backups in the cloud. They do take a little more time, but they're, are, they are there.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide. Barracuda email security. That is the filter that all of our incoming emails go through before they reach your inbox. The filter's job is to identify and block spam, viruses, malware that is being attempted to be delivered through your email. We currently average about two thousand three hundred emails that are blocked every week. So there's, there's several reasons that these emails might get blocked within Barracuda. One of them is a score that Barracuda gives an email as it scans it. That score is based on several criteria, and it's essentially a determination of how likely that email is to contain malware or, or something malicious. We can kind of, we can kind of adjust settings. We can say if you get to a certain score, we want this blocked, so we can be more aggressive or less aggressive. There's also manual blocks. There's third parties that provide weekly lists of IP addresses and domains that are known to be malicious. Those automatically get put into our filter, so any emails coming from those locations or IP addresses would be blocked automatically. There's also some, some lists that we can subscribe to, where I will just get a list emailed to me, and then I can manually input those IP addresses and domains. And then another reason for emails to be blocked is what's called geo-fencing, and geo-fencing allows us to determine certain locations that we don't want to allow emails from. And we've kind of gone aggressive on that, where any email that comes from anywhere outside of the United States or Canada is currently being blocked. We found that there's actually very few legitimate emails that anyone's looking for that come from any of those countries, US or Canada. But like I said, we adjust these settings to be fairly aggressive. That does end up in blocking several emails that are legitimate and people are looking for, but we find that's a little better than going less aggressive and allowing many more malicious emails to come through. If there is an email that someone knows they're missing, we can always go in and, and I'm sure that we've probably done that for all of you, where we just go in and manually release that email. Next slide. Zix email encryption is, the purpose of Zix is to protect any sensitive data that we are sending out, so it's for our outgoing mail. So sensitive data could include social security numbers, driver's license numbers, credit card numbers, date of birth, among a lot of others. Zix will scan any outgoing email to see if it contains any of that information, and if it does, it will automatically send it in encrypted form. But we also have the option, if, if I'm sending an email and I'm not sure that it's going to be encrypted, but I would like it to be, I can include secure in the subject line of the email, and Zix will automatically encrypt that. And then an encrypted email basically is intended to only allow that email to be read by or opened by the, the intended recipient. Next slide. Cisco AnyConnect VPN. Cisco AnyConnect is used to create a secure tunnel to, to connect remote users, which allows them to safely and securely work from home or any other remote location. It's seamless to the users. It allows them access to all the resources that are available to them if they were working on-site. We combine Cisco AnyConnect with RSA multi-factor authentication for enhanced security. RSA is an app that provides a code which changes every sixty seconds. So when somebody's logging into a VPN account, they not only have to provide their password, but then they have to, in addition, provide that code that's either on a, on an app on their phone, or some people choose to carry a fob. That code changes every sixty seconds. So if someone were to manage to get a hold of your password, they still wouldn't be able to log into that VPN account without that, that code that they would not have access to. Next slide. CrowdStrike Falcon is the next generation antivirus. Next generation basically means that it uses AI, machine learning, and behavior analysis to detect and prevent threats. So it offers twenty-four by seven remediation of all of our servers and endpoints. When we set up with CrowdStrike, they give us three levels that we can choose from for our protection. You can either go with a level where, which would be the lowest level, where they see the, the breach or the malicious attack, but they basically just alert us so that we can respond to it. The middle, the middle choice would be a more active mode where they may block that activity or, or. But I'm going to skip ahead to the third level, which is the level that Meeker County chose. It's the most aggressive level. It's called active mode, and in active mode, Falcons' prevention policies are set to be the most aggressive. They aim to proactively block and contain threats based on their recommendations and predefined configurations. When they detect a threat, we've got, we have ours configured to take immediate remote action to address these threats, and this can be up to isolating a device from the network. So if CrowdStrike sees a malicious, any malicious activity, they are able to block it, and they are also able to remove that device from our network so that it can't, it can't pass anything on. We've decided to take that, that mode because most threats are designed to happen after hours, on weekends, on holidays, knowing that IT staff probably aren't there to respond immediately. So they can, they can immediately remove those devices from our network. When they do that, they send out emails letting us know what they did, what caused it, what, what they did to, to remediate it. So on the next slide, I've kind of, I've got an email that was sent to us by CrowdStrike. I believe it was in July. They had, this is just an example of what they will do when they, when they see a threat. They had determined that there was a malicious event happening on a computer. They've said that the severity of this event was high and that they, you could see in the email that it was prevented. And then on the next slide, the immediately following email provided us information on what machine was involved and what the unusual activity was. And then using this provided information, we were able to determine that the activity on this particular case was not malicious, but it was actually caused by a test that IT was doing. What we did was an activity that wasn't common. It wasn't normal. CrowdStrike saw that and determined that it could be malicious activity. If they had been unable to prevent that action from taking place, they would have isolated that machine from our network. If it had been malicious activity, that could not then have spread to the rest of our network. CrowdStrike has been provided the cell phone numbers to all three IT staff. If something were to happen at three in the morning that needed immediate attention by us, they would give us a call regardless of date or time. Without, without that procedure, something could happen on Friday night, ten minutes after we leave. We wouldn't know what happened until Monday morning. The entire network could possibly be affected by then.
So, Rob, CrowdStrike has the ability to isolate that machine, or do they have to notify you to isolate it?
With the, with the active stance that we have taken, we've given them the ability to isolate that machine. So if something happens at three in the morning, they can pull that machine right then and there.
Okay. Good.
Next slide. Here, I've just listed some of the department-specific software. I'm not going to really get into what each and every one of them does. It's just kind of a, a way for you to see how much we actually support and, and, so I'll just highlight a couple of these. Exact Vision. Exact Vision is an interface to all of the hundred and fifty-five surveillance cap, uh, cameras that we have on, on all of our facilities. It allows for the live viewing of all the cameras and for the retrieval of past recordings. And we have a retention period on these recordings of anywhere from sixty to seventy-five days so we can look back at events that may have happened. The exception to that sixty to seventy-five days is all of our interview rooms in the law enforcement center. We have a separate server just to collect that data, and that's saved basically forever because there's, there's often times when they need to look back at an interview for a court case or something, and it may have happened a year or a year and a half ago. Another one to highlight is the Windy SX software. The software is used to control access to and within county buildings. Access to doors can be limited to specific employees, and, and doors can be set to automatically lock and unlock at specific times. The main doors, you know, they lock automatically after our business hours, and then logs are kept of all of that activity. So if I need to find out who accessed what door when, we can, we can look back and see that. And then probably the biggest one within LEC is Zerker. Zerker is a public sector safety administration software. Each department within the LEC uses a different module within Zerker. Dispatch uses CAD or computer-aided dispatch module. Corrections uses the jail management module, but there's several other modules which are used by each department within the law enforcement center. The next slide.
Mr. Chair? I'm just curious about this access control. So if we had an event going on in this building, could you do something so all the doors locked going in and out both ways or no?
Yes, that, that is not done by IT. That is done by maintenance.
Okay.
But yes, that is possible to.
So that you could just make a call and say lock down and they can lock down?
Yeah, and they have, part of, part of that software is an alarm module. We don't monitor the alarms, but maintenance monitors the alarms. They can see if a door's been propped open, things like that.
Thank you.
Not out, but in. You can't lock it going out because of fire code issues, right? Don't have people that lock it out. But coming in, yes. But like within the interior of the building as well, right? We have the access control on our office. It's always locked all the time, but we have some that are open throughout the day. Those could be able to be locked somewhere.
And then on the next slide, just listed some of the software that we support. I shouldn't say we support because Lou and Laura basically support that software. So I'm not even going to try to get into what each of them does because Lou and Laura are the ones who are experts on those, but just to give you an idea of what we support in that area. And then also, this is a list of the software we support within the HHS department. The biggest one out of that list is probably caseworks. Caseworks is a platform that they use for document management and workflow automation. It's kind of streamlines the processes, enables caseworkers to spend more time directly with clients. But again, Lou and Laura are the experts on those softwares. So most questions I may not be able to even answer.
So just for, does, does Laura spend most of her time in one department and you are overall, or does everybody work in every department?
Everybody works in every department to some point, but Laura probably has more on this side of the world, and Lou handles a lot more of the software on the law enforcement side of the world.
But you, but you're cross-trained to do whatever if you had to go in?
We try to. We probably need to do a better job of that, but with the limited staff we have, that's sometimes, sometimes very difficult to do.
Thank you.
And then on this last slide is just some of the goals we have in our IT department. The number one is the quick response time to help desk tickets. One of our major duties is to respond to the daily needs of all of our end-users, and they submit those tickets via emails to a help desk email. It's our goal to kind of properly prioritize those requests and respond to them all in a timely manner. Protecting data and ensuring compliance. We have put several measures in place to safeguard data from unauthorized access and breaches and destruction. These measures have helped us to be in compliance with IRS and BCA mandates. Some of those measures we've taken are the immutable backups, our CrowdStrike Falcon, and our Zix encryption of the emails. Effective resource allocation. We realize that the money we spend comes from the county taxpayers, and so we feel it's probably our most important resource. Because of this, we're always looking for ways to reduce costs. Recent examples of this are, are elimination of several network switches through planning and consolidation, and we've made the decision to move forward with a five-year equipment refresh schedule over to a seven-year. We found that after five years, we're replacing a lot of equipment that didn't necessarily need to be replaced, so we've decided to go with a seven-year schedule. Integrating new technologies, we're always looking for ways to implement new technology that can improve the end-user's experience and the security of our network and of our data. We recently improved the security of our data backups with the addition of our Dell data domain that was approved several months ago, and we're hoping to improve the user experience with the new M three sixty-five licensing in, in addition to the various security features that it offers. And continuous improvement. While we do our best to, to provide the best service possible to all of our users, we know that we don't always succeed, but we also know that there's always room for improvement.
So I got a couple of questions. Most all of us use Teams, okay? But we don't always invite just folks from Meeker County. We have outside folks coming in. Does Teams protect anything that could happen from that outside person being on the Teams meeting?
Those outside people on a Teams meeting really have no access. I mean, it's just a, it's a web-based.
Okay.
Meeting, so there, there is no access to, to anything on our network.
Okay, good. Then with the conversion to, to three sixty-five, we'll come Copilot. And Copilot, of course, is AI. Is that going to have a, any type of effect? Are we going to have to look at our current policies for use of AI or?
I think there's a, there's a lot of discussion among counties as to that exact question right now. And I, I, there is a AI committee. I don't know if any of that's, I'm not part of that committee. I don't know how much has been discussed in that committee regarding that. That's something that is. That's something that is relatively new, is going to take a lot of, a lot of research and learning to really know the answers to those questions.
What we've primarily talked about is guidelines. You know, we'd sent out some communication to folks about kind of being smart when they're using AI, right? For the most, a lot of AI that's out there is already built into software that we're currently using, right? When you do a search in Google, Google's AI gives you an, an option to begin with, right? So mostly what we're talking about is not using private data in chatbots, things like that because that information is being stored, but there's, we're not going to say you can't use AI because it's impossible to, to just do a hard cutoff like that, so.
Okay. And then another question I have is the multi-factor identification. Because we were at a CHB meeting and Peter from Sibley County couldn't get onto his computer because he couldn't do the multi-factor identification because he was on a different network. He was on the McLeod County network. So are we headed where we will have to eventually do multi-factor to log into our personal?
We are. As a matter of fact, that's been in the plan for a long time to not only have multi-factor while logging into email accounts, but network accounts as well. We've been kind of held back by our licensing. We, we needed the current M three sixty-five licensing that we just moved to in order to get to that point. So that's kind of one of our top priorities right now is to get to that point. We're using multi-factor for all of our VPN access when people are working remotely, but we need to get to that point with everything.
And you and I and Andrew attended that cybersecurity training that time in St. Cloud. And as we were walking to lunch that day, you said you haven't been sleeping good. Is, is that improved?
Uh, not much, no.
Yeah, it's a, it's, that cyber is, we, we had a long discussion at our hospital meeting last night about cybersecurity and are we?
Which county, which county had it? Was it, it was in Southern, was it?
Murray, Murray had a big cybersecurity issue. City of St. Paul had, I mean, it's all over the place, so.
One of the things that we learned that day was that the malware could actually be planted in, in your computer and in your backups, not set to activate for a long period of time. So it could sit there six months before it triggers. Is that why we have so many backups in so many different ways and?
Yes.
How would you detect if it's in there? So you didn't use the wrong backup?
You don't probably because.
That's probably why he's not sleeping so well.
Till it's active, till they try and use it.
Right. And I mean. If, if, if tomorrow we came in and we'd been hit with ransomware, we would immediately have to report that and there would be forensic experts involved who, once they determined what caused whatever had happened, we could then go into the backups and, and verify.
Okay.
So that's why we keep, you know, two-year backup, a backup of last year, a backup of two years ago, because we can always at least.
We had a situation, what, a year or two ago where someone was making an effort to log into one of the systems, right? And it got caught by CrowdStrike, was it?
No, I believe that was previous to us having CrowdStrike. It was actually caught by an email that was sent out stating that this was happening. It was within our ConnectWise software.
Yes.
ConnectWise is a software we use to connect remotely to a user's computer. If Laura's sitting in, in the courthouse and someone overhearing the systems, we can remote into their computer using ConnectWise. There was a breach within ConnectWise, which we just barely lucked out on because an email was sent out after hours stating that this was an issue. I don't usually read my emails after hours, but I did that night and I immediately cut that server off. So then the process began where the forensic people, experts were looking at it and they determined that indeed our server, our server had been accessed. They had, they had changed the password to our administration credentials. They hadn't gotten any further because that server got cut off. So had I not decided that evening to look at my emails, it would have been completely.
But it, it, it gave us an opportunity to experience that forensic piece of it, right? And it was, especially for a situation where there was not a, a really negative consequence for a, an event, it was good to go through that process, understand how it works in the event that we do find ourselves in that situation in the future, so. It was a good experience.
It was.
But as commissioners and in our, our devices that we use, we really only use Outlook, maybe Excel. We're, we're reading the files that are more sent to us than getting into any part of the organizations.
The only part of our organization that you access at all is our email.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not accessing any of our servers or internal
Yeah.
devices.
Quick, this maybe is delving in a little too deep, but when you change software, is the ability to, you know, use that backup, does that change? Can you still back up if you have a different software than? I mean, we're changing to, if, if we change Microsoft or something like that, you can still use that backup?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So when you had this incident with ConnectSir, have they found a way now to get ahold of you if it's the middle of the night with, I mean, I, I don't always check my emails and everything, because that kind of starts there, right?
With, with that particular software, we, when we first started using ConnectWise, we, we had it set up so that we could access it from anywhere. So if I wanted to assist a user and I was at home, I could just go on to ConnectWise. Since that incident, we've isolated it to only be accessible on our network. So for that particular piece of software, if that same type of thing were to happen again, it wouldn't affect us.
There's so much to think about though, like it's after hours, I'm sure.
But that's part of the purpose of why we have CrowdStrike, i- is to help identify, you know, these invalid accesses and, you know, software being installed and things like that, so.
So.
And it monitors activity on, on a day-to-day basis, so it knows if it's saying normal, it alerts it.
Right. With the example I gave in the slideshow, it was something as simple as, it actually involved ConnectWise. Lou was having some issues with ConnectWise, so he took the, the executable file for ConnectWise, which normally sits in whatever folder it normally sits in, and he moved it to a different location and ran it. CrowdWise, CrowdStrike immediately saw that this activity was taking place from a, from an unusual location and blocked it. It blocked Lou from being able to, to run what he was trying to run.
So as commissioners, now I just want to look at this group of five. The way we could actually harm the system is by opening a malicious email?
Correct. You're less likely to harm the system by opening a malicious email because you're not connected to our network. But yes, that is, right now, that's our biggest threat is emails, things that are contained in emails. One of the softwares I didn't include in the slide was our KnowBefore software. But KnowBefore, we run monthly trainings that are sent out to users. Most users feel that the trainings that they're having to take are very repetitive. It's by design, it's to drill that into your head month after month after month that you have to pay attention to every link, every, every document that might be attached to an email because they're, so it's designed to, to be very repetitive.
Because I know I've sent you emails in the past and said, hey, I don't think this is right. And you send it back to me, it's legitimate, and I still haven't heard where this outfit is. So I just delete it and I never hear back from it.
I do, I do the same thing. And I probably sense, I just, if I have a doubt, I just don't send it on and sometimes it says it's fine. But if I don't know them, I'm not going to monkey with them.
Well, the big one is this DocuSign because I recently got one that they were asking me to sign. It turned out to be legitimate and I was supposed to, after I had done some checking, I might have sent it to you first and then you said it was legit. And I did find out that I was supposed to do it, but by then the time limits had ran out on being able to do it and et cetera, et cetera.
Especially when you're chair.
I get nervous about those. But it does make us nervous because we get it, we're not sure.
Yeah.
You know, and so I.
Mine was from the Emergency Services Board and Micah sent it, but it got bouncing back. And then it's because it contained, there was flag in it, it wouldn't let it go through.
We, we.
Then he got it through and then I missed the time because it was over the weekend or late Friday and I, he was calling, leaving me messages and saying it's not going through. So then I looked for it because it wasn't coming through, it was the other day Friday. Then he got it through and the time expired, so now we got to start over.
We were literally receiving hundreds of emails a week that were malicious, malicious emails that claimed to be DocuSign. So we made the decision, I don't know, a month or so ago, to go in our filter and just block anything that even contained the word DocuSign. And then we will, we will go in and release those that are actually.
Okay, good. I like that.
That happened to me on a couple. I, I, I couldn't do it. One of them was from Woodland and I said, I, so then I got ahold of IT and they released it so I could, so. But I don't mess around or delete it or just report it because I'm not going to be. Are people keeping up on their training pretty well now? Is there anybody you want to pick on at this?
Wearing lavender today.
I'm not going to pick on anyone in particular, but we're probably usually somewhere between ninety, ninety-five percent people completing it.
It is repetitive. I mean, I did some the other night and I like woke up five minutes later, I had to start over because I fell asleep.
And in addition to those, those monthly trainings, we also have it set up so it does send phishing emails. And so if you're using that Fish Alert button and it's one of those that is sent out by KnowBefore, it'll, it'll tell you, it'll congratulate you.
I love it when it says you did.
You did well.
Yes.
That's good, doesn't it?
Way to go. If you were to click the link on one of those test emails, that automatically assigns you an additional KnowBefore training.
That's how you know you failed? Get an email with training.
Why am I getting all these trains?
So are you, on a scale of one to ten, are you, how comfortable are you with our security? Given you everything you need? I mean, that's a wide open question. We can afford any need.
It's not very high on the scale, I will, I'll be honest with you. We don't, we don't have a network security specialist on staff. So we utilize Marco Technologies and Morris Electronics to assist us with that. But unfortunately, we can't always get somebody when we need somebody and we can't always get the person that has the expertise that we need. So it becomes difficult.
I think every board is having the same conversations. I appreciate all you're doing though.
Yes, we do.
I do have a question just in terms of just like access points, because I didn't, I didn't think about this, but when I was up north, I had, there was a AMC Zoom on the census and data anyway, it was a lunch alert thing. So I, I mean, I accessed the Zoom up at the, up north. Is that, are there concerns about anything like that? I mean.
No.
That's not a, okay. Sometimes I'm worried where you, where are you getting it?
How far north were you?
Well, I was in, I was a, I was like a mile from Canada. My phone thought I was in Canada.
How was the smoke?
Not bad. Well, certain days were, certain days were worse than others. But no, we're up in, you know, thirty miles north of Grand Marais on the confluence.
I happened to be at the casino when each machine started shutting down one day and the ATMs quit working and if you, I mean, it was weird. Like all of a sudden, if you got a payout, I was watching this guy and then the machine wouldn't come back up and pretty soon the ATMs wouldn't work. And pretty soon you had to take it, if you had needed money, you had to go to the cashier and they were, I mean, that was within, I got out of there because I thought this is eerie, but.
Massive hysteria.
Well, I mean, within an hour, it wasn't ma, I mean, people were just like, and they were down for days, right? That was around somewhere and.
Well, that even hit the, um.
How many million dollars were lost?
You used to get in your hotel room?
Yeah, you couldn't get in and out of your hotel room, really. No. It was, I had some friends that went down there for their anniversary and they went home because every time they wanted to go in, like have a drink maybe and go back out, they had to get somebody to come and open the door and they're like, forget it, we're going home, so.
Well, we see why you're up at night.
Yeah, we do. It's, it's eerie.
One last question. You mentioned early on about work sites and Watkins are different. What is that, work from home? Is that what you mean or is that?
Sheriff's Office has offices in both Watkins, Assle.
Yep.
Contract with us.
Contract, alright. That's right.
Eden Valley, we support, Eden Valley Police Department uses the same Zerker system that we do though, so they're, they're piggybacked onto us.
And don't like the fire department and rescue all use Zerker too, but I don't know if that, that's probably all part of that.
Okay, they're, they're not in overtime with twenty plus at all.
I think that's just part of what the sheriff's office, I mean, that, because I think every department in the, in the county uses Zerker, whatever sheriff's office is, is like, what we're using.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for all you do. Thank your department.
Yeah, big job.
You guys have been working hard.
Important job.
Good job.
Yep, and I don't envy you when you convert Bath to Office three sixty-five because there'll be a lot, big learning curve there.
Why is he picking on me because I'm running? I've been completing my trainings and not missing any answers.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering what Laura in the, in SSIS and the MAXIS.
I can't imagine.
If the state does an upgrade, what I'm sure she's looking for.
Yes.
The other thing is their use of AI is probably going to have to be different.
I know there's talk of it, using, trying, there's talk of using a private firm rather than letting the state design a system because their track record isn't very good.
A good plan.
I think it's been promoted quite heavily, so.
Thank you, Rob. County Administrator Lutzen, you have a report today.
Yeah, I have a couple of quick things for you. First off, in response to Commissioner Schmidt's question from earlier today on the payables, those were two air handlers that were for this building, were not part of the remodel project. They were budgeted replacements that the work was done last year and the final payments were just paid.
Yeah, I don't, we didn't have no failures or nothing, it was scheduled.
They had previously failed and they no longer will. Yeah, knock on wood. As a reminder, next week we have a work session to discuss the budget on Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, we have the county picnic, especially for those of you who will be coming over right from the canvas board. That'll be nice. I once again possibly have jury duty from Wednesday through Friday, so I'm hopeful to be at the picnic, but there's a chance I will not be. So if I'm not there.
Wave from the window.
Please eat an extra burger for me, so.
I'll save you one.
I would think we should start grilling between ten-thirty and eleven, have the coals hot and ready to go because it starts at eleven-thirty, so whoever is.
So our, our chief griller is on the end.
I won't be able to help grill because I have a canvas board meeting.
I don't, I don't help grill, I'll just be honest. I just stand around.
Oh, that's, that was good.
We just got to set up the times to pick up the things.
Yep, yep.
I mean, I, I can be there at ten-thirty and help get the grill started and so forth, so.
I mean, yeah, just tell me what I need to do, I'm completely.
Show up at the park at about ten-thirty, eleven.
I think you're going to be entertaining.
Go to the canvas board first though.
What time is that?
Singing a song. Yeah, there you go.
Uh, and that concludes my report.
Wow.
Wow, that was wonderfully concise.
I told you, I only had a couple of brief items for you.
Alright, who would like to start with their commissioner reports today?
Oh gosh, I can start if you'd like, I guess.
Sure.
You can add to this one, it gets to you. We had Prime West talked about the same thing we always talk about, challenging times with the Medicaid and Medicare. Karma has passed, so now we're going to have to see how that works out.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven. There was a discussion about they exempted chiropractic care from Medicaid, don't ask me why. Yeah, so if you're Medicaid, they're not going to cover it, so you're going to end up going to therapy instead, I guess, which is much more costly.
But the carve-out for dental.
And the carve-out for dental did not happen, which was, which was a good thing. They're concerned about the twice-a-year renewal, so they're wondering if it'll be a simpler application, et cetera. they're wondering if it'll be a simpler application, et cetera, et cetera, so. They're in contracts, negotiations with DHS. Prime West now pays forty percent more than Medicaid pays, so. That was, I don't know, who can add if you had anything else.
Do it now.
Yeah.
The CEO searched for Jim Prisbilla's replacement. They discussed that. Um, they have decided how they're gonna proceed. Um, they will interview internal candidates first and then
See.
See if there's one there. If not, then they will post, uh, probably nationally for a position like this.
And they, they have, uh, Jim has kinda had a cessation plan in place, so, but I think they've only had one applicant from within. So there was a, some discussion about that. We had a CHB meeting, um, we had a presentation that I thought was interesting by a gal. Let me see, I don't think I have her name in front of me. She was hired, uh, under a grant for diabetes that they, that they got. And Sibley, they're starting with Sibley for the first year because they were more ready to go and then the second year they'll be working with McLeod and Meker on it. So they hired a gal to go in. Um, I can't remember her name, Spanish. And she volunteered to do it. And she had a presentation on the first thing she did, and this was really interesting. She went into food shelves, emergency. And noticed that all the signs were in English. So if you couldn't speak English, right? Apparently navigating a food shelf isn't as easy as you think. In other words, there's limits on what you can, what they offer, you know, what you can have according to your family. And by simply changing the signs and putting them in Spanish too, it just made a world of difference. She had a slide presentation on it. Now, there was something that was cheap. But somebody has never thought of. So if you can imagine walking in there and not speaking English, how overwhelming and if the people that are working there don't speak Spanish, how overwhelming it is. So I thought it was interesting, did you, Paul?
Well, not only speaking Spanish or English, not being able to, you can't read it then probably either. So, can of Campbell's soup.
Yeah.
What you getting?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is this?
Vegetable beef, you're getting, you know.
I mean, it really brought it to light. So that was very interesting. Then we had a community health assessment, uh, update by Brett. They're gonna have a huddle for healthy communities on September fifth, no, September twenty-third. Um, at the Crow River Golf Club. Kind of gonna be a kickoff, I guess. So I don't know if they're gonna be inviting all the commissioners or.
It's the same day as our picnic.
It's the same day, no, oh, September twenty-third. September twenty-third, not August. So.
Oh, September. Yes, 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 yes. That's our work session.
We had a discussion about the resolution. Paul picked that up and did a very good job on it. Um, so people understand why we're doing what we're doing and that went over well. Um, we tried to get to the bottom of how much money we have, but they're in the middle of, when I, I shouldn't say it like that. They're in the mid, middle of their audit, so they'll have more information when, when this is over. So that's kinda what we were. Did you have anything to add to that?
You know, a lot of our committees, we go to, we get financial reports, but they're subject to the audit. Tyler comes in, uh, for the hospital once a month and gives us an update, but he always says, here's our numbers, subject to the final audit. And that's kinda what Beth and I were after. We wanted to know where the CHB was. Just give us an idea, subject to audit. We understand that. Your number may be, may be different, but, um, we're gonna work on that to maybe get a little better handle on that, uh, from them. And then the CHB, I thought the other counties were really good about the fact that we're going to explore other options. Um, uh, nobody was set or anything like that. I thought that all went, went well.
It did, it did, so. And, um, the other thing was the update on the consultant was I think they're narrowing down to two. Paul had sent him a name and she said that turned out to be, I don't know if you got that at AMC?
We got that at our dis- remember at the district meeting up north, there was that one handout. Um, and it talked about this group that dealt with public health. They knew it. They helped, they assisted counties in that. And I had sent that on to them to say, hey, you know, if we hire consultants, we don't wanna teach them about public health before they tell us what to do. Let's get somebody who already knows about it, so.
And I, I talked to Steve Gardner at the Candy O A County Fair and he said that, you know, Candy and Ranville are. They had a discussion or whatever, we were kinda intrigued by the idea of us.
Yeah, Andrew had, uh, and I had crafted a letter that was sent to the two chairs over there asking, you know, if they wanted to have a discussion, so. You know, and they were both open to, you know, bringing that forward to their own committees, so.
Okay, so, and then I had a finance meeting for the hospital on Wednesday and yesterday we had a governing board, uh, meeting yesterday afternoon. Uh, we had a presentation on this naloxone program by Dr. Renz that she's working with the county on. That was very interesting.
It was.
The hospital was gonna be a site where you can pick it up. Um, and I don't know when that starts. Is it starting soon?
Soon, I thought. As soon as they got the product.
Gonna be very simple.
Yeah.
When you pick up, what is it again?
What is naloxone?
The Narcan. They can pick it up.
Oh, okay, okay.
You can walk in there. You don't have to give them your name. You don't, they, they log that someone picked it up, period. But you don't have to give your name a- and you get the kit. And it had, the kit came with three.
Three shots.
Three shots. And it's the injection.
And then there's a, uh, instruction in there.
Mm-hmm.
On how to do it. And that's it. I think you get one or two.
Latex gloves, um, the kit was pretty complete.
Right. There, there's a person, let's see if I have the name here, Rumler, I think was the name, but he overdosed, because of fentanyl or whatever. And his family started this, so they have a big grant to do this with and, and. I don't know, are, are the, uh, emergency people, are they, are the fire, is the fire department rescue carrying it?
Rescue, I don't know.
Do they have the nose? What are they using?
Yeah.
They have spray too, so. And there'll be, you know, there's chest strips and, uh, there's gonna be, they've been working with our public health on this, right?
Oh, boy.
I believe so.
Yeah. And in fact, there was an article in the paper, Dr. Renz is, so she had an interesting, interesting presentation, so that's gonna be happening.
If, if I may add one thing, I found it interesting that there's no harm if you give it to someone if you suspect them overdosing. There's no, there's nothing that hurts them.
You might pass them off. No, I mean, if, if they come out of whatever is going on, that, that is one of the precautions people can be a little rambo, just coming out.
She said that. And, but I said, what if I found Beth in a,
Stoned.
A state where I thought she had, and I gave it to her. And she said basically, maybe, um, an upset stomach, maybe. But, um.
She did say that sometimes when people come out of this, they're a little bit.
Agitated.
Agitated, that's the word, kinda, yeah.
Disorientated and.
Agitated, so. But I think it's gonna be a great program and, um, overdoses have gone down, but now, they are showing they're sneaking back up a little bit.
She said something very interesting that it's hard to find heroin on the street. Now it's awful.
Just about can't. But when hero- I think when heroin was really hot a few years ago, we were still hearing about a lot of meth around here and not heroin so much. And then down, I think in Minneapolis area, there was a lot of heroin issues. I don't know if we ever had them here.
I think meth is still the, kinda the common. It's cheap and easy to make.
But it was an interesting presentation and if you ever have a chance to hear it, I think you'd enjoy it.
Yeah, there's been different, there, there's different perspectives on, on issuing Narcan.
She talked about that.
Rescue squad perspectives and, and first responder perspectives.
You know, some people consider enabling, um, Dr. Renz will tell you it's a disease like anything else. And when people have a relapse, doesn't mean we shouldn't try to save their life because, you know, so.
Yeah, no, no.
To have her at a work session sometime might be interesting to hear about this, when we get all this other stuff out of it. Um, the other thing is, uh, we appointed, we got a new safety officer, Dave Daniels, and he worked for Centricare for a lot of years, so he will be also good when we start doing the clinic. Beginning the, uh, the bids are coming in. Hopefully we'll have something more solid in September. As far as pricing goes, they're ranging from thirty to fifty, you know, so they gotta go over them. I think they've got three good bidders that are good no matter who we choose, so. We also heard of Brian Leidig, wasn't there? He had a family emergency, but he called in for a little bit and went over the, some of the cuts that Centricare had been making. You know, I'm sure you read, they combined some CEOs and closed some things down. And one of the clinics that is closing down is Eden Valley. So at the finance meeting, we had, uh, just a brief discussion about maybe trying to keep Eden Valley open if we can through Meker, what that would take. So, um, Mary Ellen's gonna be reaching out to you, Steve, because you represent Eden Valley and also to Cindy, your city, city. And see, you know, if it's possible. There was some talk about, and I think their nearest one now is, where, where did they say the nearest clinic is for Centricare now? Cold Spring, maybe?
Richmond, I think, Richmond.
I think some of the issue that Centricare was having too was people just walking in there like it's a walk-in clinic, right? Instead of going to a walk-in clinic. So anyway, she's gonna be, we're gonna be looking into it and if we can help, we're gonna maybe try to keep that. And she, she asked about speaking to you and I said that would be a good idea.
Yeah, um, I had just been asked the other, just a few days ago if, if I heard of Eden Valley and I said, I hadn't heard anything yet.
I think they're gonna close by October or something.
And I think they had, uh, Fire Rem Rites on care, they cut five hundred and fifty positions out of eleven thousand, so I mean, and I said, who was I talking, somebody said they're basically catching up to a lot of what the other parts of the industry had done.
That's.
I mean, it's.
And every big health system has done what they just did. They were the last ones. And they just, you know, they were, I think they cut off some fat, that administration wise. It makes sense to have the same CEO for a couple of the hospitals that are located close together. Because with their medical school that they're developing, or now doing, it's important that they keep that going to get real healthcare providers. So, so it wasn't, it, it's gonna turn out to be a positive thing, but you know how the news goes, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, good. I, I appreciate it.
So she'll be reaching out to you. We also had an IT update there. The, um, foundation update from the golf tournament was we had, we did thirty percent more profit than we did the year before, so I'm like, I wonder how much that is. I didn't figure it out. We might be close to forty.
About forty-one.
Forty-one, so. They tried some new things and, and it seemed to have went well. Um, I think we had a discussion about ambulances again. It's about male. Mary Ellen thought that she had on a, you know, they were willing to meet with her and then you don't hear anymore, so. The jury's still on that.
Can I ask what, from the hospital perspective, what, what is your challenge there?
Well, the challenge is that we've had a lot of complaint. Well, let me be careful. A couple of years ago, Dr. Sands was getting ready to quit. Do you, were you here then? Because of the terrible job that the current ambulance service was doing. And we've tried everything, but they have their area and apparently you can't, and then Cosmos.
Yeah, Cosmos had reached out to me, um, and had a great discussion with one of their, of course, their BLS. So every time there's a call, they combine, they're getting Hutchinson.
They're getting out of launch, yeah.
So it, it goes to Hutchinson. So that, instead of coming to Litchfield, a lot of potential patients end up in Hutchinson.
And I'm not sure how that works. Do they have to go to Hutchinson?
I, well, I don't know how that does. Alina is there, right? Alina is Hutch?
Somebody said it's Alina.
I, I believe so, yes. Um, really gets dicey in the ambulance services.
I know, that's why I'm hesitant to say much.
I had, I had a long discussion with Joe Helly about that, Beth and I both did. Um, and it, we may have to pass a resolution at this board about this to push it upstream. Um, Joe may, Joe said he was really gonna dive into it. And he said, we'll put an ambulance service down there. We don't have a problem with that.
That's what we'd like to see, or.
A Centricare.
Or our own, or our own ambulance service. You know, there was a private ambu- ambulance service that was down for years.
Yes.
And then this, and I don't know, I, I still don't know how Mayo ended up here. I.
I'm not sure. Well, they bought a Gold Cross. So Gold Cross, it used to be Gold Cross and St. Cloud was Gold Cross.
All of a sudden it went from Gold Cross to Mayo.
Yeah. Um, as far as the challenges from a service side, I guess is the way I look at it, like Cosmos, that's a, there's a big geography there of vastness that you gotta cover.
Right.
And there's not a large city anywhere out there. So I mean, them are the challenges. Watkins is the same thing, you know, they're, they're doing about, uh, two calls a day on average year round. You know, six hundred calls or better a year. Um, and their basic life support, but your options are, it's a big void if you lose a service like that.
And they're all volunteer.
Under pressure from these males and the Gold Crosses and the Alinas, you know, I mean, them bigger pockets.
Those are volunteer, right?
Uh, yeah, they, they.
So, yeah.
And that's where then your community paramedic really helps out those basic life supports. Cause if Mike Muller jumps in, uh, Watkins ambulance, they just went from BLS to ALS. And then we take his squad and bring it to the fire hall or something. He gets a right, he gets dropped off after the call back at his squad. And so, that's where that, that community paramedic is a huge piece in these rural areas where you have them gaps that need service. But, uh, but he also upgrades the standard of service that they can provide.
Well, we'll see. I mean, we've talked about it for months.
For years.
Leaders have talked about it. We've brought the problem to them and it just doesn't seem to get solved, so. So that's still, I can't think of any, uh, we're doing some board development, uh, that's gonna be more information down there. And I guess we will have more about the, uh, clinic probably after next month. The finances look good. They're not, um, orthopedics where we got the robot, um, hasn't been as busy as we'd hoped, but it, but they've got more work. We went through some doctors and stuff, but I think getting the word out there and people being able to go there is gonna make a difference. And it's growing. They're expecting more as we go, so. Pretty much mostly good news, but like everyone else, we don't know what's gonna happen with the Medicaid and Medicare.
Can we go back on one of your reports, back to Prime West?
Sure.
Andrew, uh, Jim has said they're about ready to start going and visiting the different counties again.
Yeah.
So all you have to do is reach out to him and, and he'll schedule a time to come down and make a presentation to us.
It's been a while since I've been here.
They've not been here since I've been here.
So then it's really been, how long have you been here? A year?
Yeah, about six months.
About six months. So that's, that's, um. I'm, uh, I think once, well, you were here under our previous administrator or not?
Yeah, seven, seven, seven. I, I can't remember. They might have been here once.
I mean, he'll be glad to come. He wants to. He wants to communicate with our health and human services and.
I, I did get a.
Part of the issue too at that time was when we were establishing Prime Health. So I think they came to visit for that too.
And I, I did get, uh, a question posed to me about hospital and, and, you know, Medicaid cuts and the whole conversation and is what is, and this is a deeper question, but for Tyler and, and Andrew or, you know, what is the county's position if things really went backwards? Is there a, where is the out number? If things went south, for whatever reason, take the current conversations off the table.
That's a, that's a.
And I, I said, you know what, I don't have.
That's an interesting question and we've discussed it. So they're working with, uh, Clifton, Alan Larson and they're gonna bring up different situations and they're gonna present to the governing board too. Okay. So we're gonna spend this on this clinic, which we need, and we need updates, as you all saw, to the hospital. What would happen if this happened? Then they're gonna be able to tell us what would happen. What would happen if we lost all Medicare patients? So any scenario that some. What would happen if we lost all Medicare patients, so any scenario that someone might have, they can bring to Tyler and he will have them go over it. It's, they have a, that's what they do.
Well, and this question was that, then if something like that happened, is there a point where the county can say? Here's our exit number.
Well.
You know, or.
You know, then.
I said that.
I, I, I don't foresee that, but. I understand the question, but this will, you know, if you have some scenarios you'd like him to look at, he will certainly do that.
Yeah, Clifton Allen Larson's gonna give us a best case scenario, an absolute worst case.
Anything in between that you may wanna know about, because it, you know, it's troubling, but if we're, we need the main, maintenance at the hospital, as you all saw. If we're gonna attract doctors, we need the clinic, we need to be, you know, we. Attracting doctors to real America isn't as easy as it used to be.
No, no.
So I think we had a good positive meeting.
And I think we're located in a good geography in the state.
And you know what, they do well and our therapy is, you know, we just gotta get the word out. I think they're doing better about getting the word out, Janay's doing a better job of that, they have a radio show every week. I think our people who go our walk-in clinic is doing well, so yeah, I think I see good things.
Good.
That's what I have, sorry to take so much time.
Tried to be a little more brief.
You're gonna try to be brief, that means you haven't been to as many meetings as me.
It's good to be.
Clearly, yes.
Some weeks are busier than others.
Steve and Andrew and I met with Heather on budget meeting.
Oh boy.
And we'll be bringing those things, um the work sessions, is that correct? The next work session, we'll discuss that.
I bet you that's been a process for you, thank you for doing it.
Yeah, but it, it's pretty straightforward, so I, as far as. I feel like it is, I, you know, I'm used to, it's, it's not out of my wheelhouse generally speaking, so. Um is it all good news, well, that's a no, but um you know, there are things that we control and things that we do not.
Understood.
Yep, then last week I went to tour that anaerobic dis- uh digestive system. In River Falls, Wisconsin, and that was well worth my time. I think they were able to just show us in person how this system is gonna work. And in the safety of the system, so that the people that I represent um will be, they're, they're. There, there have been some concerns about their property valuations and the lake and those things were addressed. So um and all that information is in um the planning and zoning notes, which were part of our agenda. Um so then I went to that planning and zoning meeting the next day and um a lot of the people from that area. Um from Forest City Township were there and I think they got their questions answered pretty well as, pretty well as well. Um then we had that CASA twelve public meeting. Um there, there were really, there wasn't a great amount of attendance to that, so um. Uh you know, that was a little disappointing, not a lot of people came to that.
That was about the roundabout?
That is correct.
I think you'll see more interest in that as we.
As it goes forward and we, and we determine, you know, some things about what the design will look like and so on.
So are they gonna go, cause, okay, thi- this is my question, cause I was coming up bummed, cause I saw I was out of town with that meeting, but. Cause we discussed it and we kinda like agreed that the roundabout was probably the way to go, but then as the, the word got out that Litchfield wasn't. Gonna be putting any money towards it, uh I know was it Beth, you said that, you know.
I think we'll have more discussion about that as we get down, you know, don't you think, Andrew?
Yes.
Think there'll be more discussion and we'll see where it goes, I, you know, I was against the roundabout personally, so.
Yeah, and I like roundabouts, but at the same time, I'm like.
The money and the.
Yeah, if, if the cheapest thing was the light, right?
Yeah, and I still think it's the easiest thing, but that's just me, and I still think the roundabout's gonna be an issue for Senex, but.
I agree.
But I just think as we go down the line here, we'll get more interest, don't you think?
And really the way Phil explained this, to me, you know, this is a co- a concept.
Yes.
Plan, conceptual plan that goes in and the state, there's gonna be plenty more people with their.
Yep.
Pens and papers out.
Yep.
I mean, this is just a.
Very preliminary.
Yeah, very preliminary, uh concept, and it's not a proposal.
No, you don't know if you're gonna get the funding and if you do, how much do we have to put up and is it now the time, look at what we're going through here? So there's just a lot more discussion that has to happen on it.
But, but as, just to clarify, when we did that, we did a consensus of.
Yeah.
We were all in favor of exploring the roundabout. I think that's probably the best way to put it is.
Right.
No decisions.
Well, and I, my thought process about the roundabout is, I also, when you're looking at it to get funding. The state is obviously a pro roundabout state, is the way I'll put it, so I mean, if you're gonna get funding, that's probably. You know, pick an option that's probably gonna get funded.
Right. Yeah.
We did learn a lot about roundabouts, didn't we?
We did.
The state does not, it has more problems with the two lane roundabouts.
Yes.
They're so confusing, uh and then that little inside curb is actually built for semis, so they can go right up on it. You know, so there was a lot of good information.
And there are some options, you know, design options, as we've noted, for that frontage road, road. Um and the access to Senex, so yes, it's very preliminary, but um. Yeah, and we might get more public engagement as we move forward and get more, more of a concrete uh design idea, so. And then the only other thing this week was um we, uh I worked the Forest City Thresher entry booth. And got Rod to help me, so um that went well, we probably had four hundred people through in our, uh we, what is it, a three hour shift?
Did you do Saturday or Sunday?
Yeah, Saturday.
I didn't, I wasn't able to work this year, but it's always fun.
Yeah, it was good, it was good to talk to people.
Paul, he was out there during the rainstorm, I think.
Yes.
The tin building was very interesting to sell in when it's raining.
How bad they had such bad weather, cause that's such a big fundraiser.
Yeah, it cleared up about eleven or eleven thirty and then we had a good amount of people come in. And it was really busy across the road too, at the, uh what do they call their?
Stockade.
Yeah, the stockade, they had a, whatever they call that thing. Yep, yep, so, so that would be it for me, I'll pass on to you.
And Cheryl, I appreciate all the words you did on the.
Biodegester.
Yeah, thank you for that.
It, it was, I wa- I, I will, I will just be honest, when um before I went there, I, I had a lot of concerns. And my thought was this isn't, this might not be a good thing, but by the time I went through all of the um. All of the questions, you know, the roads, the o- order, the lighting. All of those things, those were adequately answered by that company Vanguard and um and so yes, going there was very, very helpful. I, you know, to represent, yeah, thank, you're welcome, so.
And I, I'd spoke to Justin on the phone and.
Yep.
People, folks don't realize too that they went out to Vermont or.
They did, with their whole family.
You know, so it takes a long time.
It looks like they had all their ducks in a row.
They did, and, and they noted too, they have five children.
Yep.
And they, they had those same concerns, we're living, this is where we live, we don't want odor and dangerous things. Where we are raising our children, and so um so it was good to have a conversation with them as a family as well, so.
And it was interesting, your question about commercial versus agriculture.
And, and great answer, I, I, I said zoning, but I said they don't rezone it, but they do the tax. The taxation is probably different.
Yeah.
On that piece, when you're producing something, there's always a difference.
Well, if you can, if you can supply enough fuel for sixteen hundred a home.
That's fantastic.
There's gotta be some.
And that stays out of our landfills.
Yep.
Yeah, it's also.
It does, yeah, and it is not the type of, not to get too in-depth, but you picture in your head um food waste. You picture table scraps and so on, but they take in things like uh during COVID, a lot of the um, the beer companies. Their, their um tanks and things were full and they had to get rid of that. And so that, and if you have, say, some of the ice cream makers, if, his example was if you have three too many chocolate chips. In the, in, in the ice cream, you can't sell it because it doesn't meet the criteria, and so they have to get rid of that. And so they're not, it's, it's a um uh bigger than you, than you would think, and a lot from Coca-Cola too. But all of that will be processed in um Brooklyn Park, onto semis, brought out to the Wagner Farm. And piped into the facilities, so it is not exposed.
The one thing too, it's liquid.
It is liquid.
Liquified, it's not, it's not.
Yes.
Food waste, so it's.
And then the fertilizer is much better fertilizer because it includes the things from that food waste. So the fertilizer that they're putting on their field is replenishing their fields better because it's a combination of manure and food waste. And it is liquid and is injected into the field, so you don't have that smell um a- as well. Um and then it goes that, that doesn't get, the, the gas doesn't get put onto trucks and hauled somewhere. It is piped directly onto center point, and so there is less um danger. The other concern I had was whether or not there would be um pressure, because wherever there's pressure. You have the um concern that what if this blows, and there is not pressure. They have to have fans to move the gas onto the pipeline, so all those things being said, um.
Pretty amazing really, when you think about.
It absolutely is, we wanna care, wh- wh- with the issues that we have with landfills.
Yep.
Let's not fill them up, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, enough said.
Cool. Well, I was out of town. They called me up north in the Threshers and it's like, um yeah, I'm not gonna be around.
Well, her phone call came out a little late, Paul gave her my number.
Well.
But it was too late.
I think they called me like Wednesday or something, which I was like.
I think this as a new gal doing this, it wasn't the same gal.
So, we'll, we'll see what happens next, but, but while I was up north, I did, I did take in the uh, that AMC launch and learn. On the, the census data, which was actually kinda fascinating. You know, the data dot census dot gov is where everything is and there's quite a bit, couple of things that were, were interesting about that was that. Um they do an, you know, they had the, the ten year um census, but then you also have your. Your American Community Survey, the ACS, which is uh done annually, but that's only access to. Communities over sixty-five thousand, and so, and so that's kind of a supplemental thing. Uh which I thought was really kind of interesting, but um.
Not, not to interrupt, but I, I just participated in that survey.
Oh.
I got a, a flyer from the Census Bureau asking to participate and a little thing on there saying it's the law, you must participate, it was interesting. So I did, I wanted to avoid getting handcuffed over not filling out the survey and it took like forty-five minutes to fill it out, it was really in-depth, yeah.
Whereas the, the, the ten year survey, all that basically is, is a, I think it's age, gender, address. How many people in your household, maybe?
Income information.
An income, that was about it, there's really not in-depth. I don't know, they, they did discuss briefly a little bit about some of the changes that are being proposed. Um from the current executive branch about the immigration or citizenship status. Um but, you know, that's all.
That all depends on which side of the fence you're on.
Yeah, you know.
I know, we, we had a previous commissioner who said there's only two things you have to tell them, I can't remember when they were even, when they come to your door. And so they, he would frustrate them because that's all he would tell them, whatever it was, I can't remember, it's three years ago, so. That's, that's it maybe, that's three things, but some people think it's, you know, invasive, I guess, I don't know.
So, that, yeah, that's the only thing I did since we last met, so.
All right.
All right.
So we'll move along to Steve.
All right, Cheryl mentioned, uh after our last board meeting, we met with, on budget, just with HHS. Um department to go over that and then we, last Tuesday, we had our, our kinda final work group. As a budget committee, kinda put things together, so that'll be coming to you next week. Um one thing about um the group over there at HHS, Tina, we also. Had a, a Zoom meeting with um Representative Fishbox Office. And with Andrew and myself and uh and Tina and Julie Ring and talking about SNAP. And Tina put together some really good information on SNAP and, and, and the, and the processes. That we work with and error rates and, and she did such a good job that then Julie also had her on. With Representative Finstead's office in Blue Earth County later that week. Um and, and she did such a good job there that now she, they want to have them. Come up to the Fall Policy Conference and give a presentation, make her do a presentation there, so. Things that we're doing here are um, and I knew that for a while already, um a few years ago when we met on that. Out of Home Placement, remember that Christian was in and gave a presentation a while back, that started three, four years ago. And I knew right away, I was like, other counties are not doing this kinda stuff, so. So it's good that um some of these things that, and processes that we're utilizing and putting into practice are getting recognized. And uh, and we're gonna, there's a lot on the table yet moving forward, when we look at these budgets and, and what's lies ahead of us. You know, basically what we got going into this year is the same thing, the Democrats, you know, to get into that conversation, they can't pass anything. But they also have dug their heels in, they don't need to give up anything either, so that's where you're at, this kind of a stalemate. And that's what we look at at AMC is, okay, what, how, we need some relief on some of this stuff. So we will be um going back at it, there's some, there's, Don Gilman is on the HHS Finance Committee. And we'll be working there, um we had some good conversations, I met, I had a, a in-person meeting. With Department of Children, Youth and Families in St. Paul a couple of weeks ago. And um that was a four-hour meeting on processes and SSIS. And Tiki Brown, who is the head of that committee for the state, we had the state in her room too, and she is actually a. A Litchfield native, and we had a pretty, we had a, I, things I brought up and that we brought up from a county perspective. At like, let's get SSIS, which uh, uh Rod, uh Rob talked about today. Let's get that out and get that updated before you make us implement MAF and some of these other big programs. Because right now we got six different systems that do not talk to one another. And if we upgrade SSIS, we can possibly get away from a lot of duplicate work and stuff. And Tina described it best as when people go to buy it, they think when they sign up or do an application for HHS. They enter their information and it hit send like it's an Amazon order and they just, everybody pictures that things flow. And that generates a sheet of paper, and that sheet of paper needs to be, all that data on that paper that they entered in electronically. Needs to be re-entered in these other programs and none of them talk to one another, so then your error rates. It's a, it's a recipe for errors, if you.
Sounds ominous.
Not at all labor intensive, right?
No, not at all.
What a waste of personnel.
That you could be actually hands-on helping.
So that's, them are the conversations we're having and they seem to be being receptive to it. That's a far cry from seeing what, what we get out of it, and actually I was telling Rob as he was leaving here too, the other thing we talked about. One of the questions I asked is who holds the thirty-eight million dollar check that the state approved, that the legislature approved? You know, who, who says what we're buying for a product and it sounds like they're, they're open to private. Systems versus a Minlar's state project, you know, I mean, do we want another state system that hasn't, they don't have a great track record? So those are the things that are on the table, but we're hoping if we can push MAF off a few years, a couple of years or timing. Timing and work together and allow us to be efficient is really what, cause that, we're talking half million dollars in your county, so I mean, that's.
Just for the reporting, I mean, it's not all for the reporting, but there's a significant portion of that. If I, if I can, I, I shared the information with all of you that Tina provided with Representative Fishbox Office, I just sent it in an email, so it's, it's in your inboxes. And included with that is a um, a report. And included with that is a, um, a report that comes from, I believe, the state that identifies the SNAP error rate for each county. And so last year from, you know, up through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, Meeker County's error rate was sixteen percent. Well, the way that that's calculated is they do an audit of a number of SNAP cases. We had five cases pulled. One of them had an error, and the reason it had an error is because the person told the worker, I'm going to apply for unemployment. They had not yet applied for unemployment. They then applied for unemployment. They didn't come and tell the worker, I've received unemployment, so they were overpaid in their SNAP benefit by two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Or two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That two hundred and sixty-eight divided by the total dollars received for the five cases of seven hu- one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. That's how you get sixteen percent. It isn't that sixteen percent of our cases of errors, it's the dollar amount of the audited cases. A great example of this, Nicolet County has a ninety-seven percent error rate. They pulled one case, it was worth sixty-two dollars and sixty dollars if it was an error.
Wow.
So it is, in, in, in my personal opinion, it's not a great metric to determine. How much, uh, a state or a county should be paying. Statewide, our, our error rate was eight point nine percent. Which at that rate, ten percent of that cost gets shifted onto the state, went then, in all likelihood, onto the county.
I mean, they've been talking about this for so long and nothing changes. They just, I, I don't.
And it, it, and they keep compounding the issue by layering, without fixing software and addressing software. You just keep layering process on top of process on top of process. And it's, no wonder it's hard on budget. I mean, it's, and it's no wonder there's mistakes. I mean, it's, it's ripe for it. So the, these are the things that we're.
But I mean, this is, not to be repetitive, but they talk about it every year and nothing changes is the issue, so. Is there any hope it's gonna change in the next couple of years?
I think there's more leverage now than there ever has been.
From both sides?
I believe so.
Okay.
I, and, and I, talking to Senator Lang, uh, I've asked him, or what do we need to do? You guys need to keep showing up like you did this year, cause it made a difference. And it was kinda all the way through, I mean, it was just non-stop phone calls and Zoom meetings. And getting down to St. Paul and short notice to be in front of legislators and stuff, and he said, just keep that up, cause.
The, the, um, message that I've heard is that the recognition of the technology deficiencies is understood. Uh, and then when we met with Representative Fishbox Office, and then when Tina met with Representative Finstead's office. Both had, you know, they recognized that the technology is an area that's, that's an issue. And is maybe an opportunity for the federal government to partner with the state to help upgrade some of these systems. You know, they, they have a, or have had a program on the Medicaid side of things, if not on the SNAP side, where this, the federal government provides some money. A matching money to the state to help with investments into technology to make the administrative work better, so. Um, while I think our, of our hope is that they come up with a different way of determining these error rates or, or removing this as a, um, a cost shift. That there's potentially a possibility of some technology investments.
And, and Representative Fishbog, when she served in the state legislature, was also worked in the, with DHS. She was on a few, uh, committees there and subcommittees, so she has a pretty good understanding of, of the conversation. So there's, there's an education piece there, so. Stay tuned on that. Um, then, uh, we talked about the roundabout already, and I couldn't help with, uh, at Forest City this weekend. Because we had Grove City Windmill Days got moved this year, and, and I had a church festival, so. I had two things that I was already committed to, and I got the phone call on that. Um, today, this afternoon, is, uh, Trinity Lutheran Church in Grove City has their mission barbecue. So they always have a pretty good spread at, uh, starting, I think, four or five o'clock this afternoon. And then I have, uh, AMC, the, our board meeting is Friday, but we have a strategic planning and board retreat. Uh, starting tomorrow afternoon in Hastings, and then we close out with a board meeting on, on Friday afternoon, so. And that about does it.
Okay. Well, we've kinda covered a lot of the things, um, Beth and I were on a couple of them together. Uh, we met, uh, in Alex for our Prime Health, and as you recall, I came to you and asked for, uh, what you thought we should do about the rates. Um, we will go with the actuaries' projected original rates that was voted upon. Uh, it was not a unanimous vote. Um, but majority ruled on that one, um. There is nothing to prevent those counties from doing something totally on their own to put some reserve away if they so desire. So it's not as if, you know, they don't have an option, but, um, we will stay, and I believe that was a. Basically, our rates are seven and eight percent then, correct? Kinda, yeah, in a snapshot, um, for the plans, so. Um, we'll see what happens down the road. On Thursday, Beth and I had the CHB, which we've already covered. That afternoon, we had a building committee meeting with, uh, for CCT. We have now done the final execution of the purchase of the property in Renville County in Olivia. So we now have a, um, bus garage we own there with plenty and ample of room for expansion, should we need it down there. Um, so, uh, that's, that was done, and then we began discussing, um, the new building that will be constructed in Wilmer. One of the first things we have to do is acquire land, and so we're looking for land. Ideally, it would be nice to have land that accessed Highway twelve. Uh, because that's kind of a split point to go to the west or to the east, to Litchfield. Um, and something maybe close to, uh, a connecting route down to Renvo County, so that we would have, you know. So we're gonna put out an RFP there, um, and just see if anybody has.
Do you go?
I'm sorry, what?
I mean, how far west do you go?
Well, we go all the way over to Swift County.
Okay.
So, um, it's a, it's a fair amount. Um, so we kinda, you know, and then we have our fueling station, right? How far away from the fueling station do we wanna be in Wilmer? And, um, you know, if you look at Wilmer, the majority of the Wilmer itself, Wilmer proper. Transportation is dead center, so, you know.
Those are.
But, but you know, the thing is, buses are mobile, so, okay, yeah, we spend a couple of extra miles to get to the pickup location or the drop-off location. So, um, you know, you start saying, how important is it if we travel an extra three miles in the grand scheme of things? Yes, over the course of the year, a lot of miles, a lot of, a lot of fuel, but, um. Property in, in that particular circle is rather expensive. So that's why we decided to put out an RFP, just see if somebody has a chunk of land along, um, Highway twelve that they might want to sell, so. Um, we'll see what that produces for, uh, us to look at. Otherwise, we end up, we look at with the realtors and, and the EDA from over there and see if there's, uh, anything. But, um, we're hoping to get something along Highway twelve would be the, be our preference. Um, then we had a, um, Joint Powers Board meeting on Friday in Wilmer with CCT. Um, not much to report from that. Um, we had one issue and we dealt with that and moved on. And Beth, uh, of course, uh, covered the hospital meeting that we had last night. This afternoon, at about noon, we have MAP, and at one o'clock, we have suicide prevention, so, that's it.
Is there an AMC thing at one? Today?
What is the name of the thing?
Oh, gosh, you know, let me look at my, let me look in my emails, cause there was something.
I've not signed up for anything.
Cause I was like, oh, that's kind of a conflict with the one o'clock.
I'm looking at my calendar.
I have nothing. What is, what is, what is the treatment court?
Oh, that's where.
That's coming up in September, right?
Right.
September third or tenth?
I don't know anything about it. What is it?
It's something they do with repeat offenders who have, um, substance abuse issues, and they give them a chance to do, uh, it's called, what's it called? It's not called treatment court.
September tenth, right on Candy.
It's called Drug Court.
It's in Wilmer.
Yeah, and they'll have a graduation or something you can attend. I think they're having a picnic, aren't they? And I see they're having a.
I've never attended one, so.
I, I went once a while ago.
I did one or two, but that's also, I gotta be in, I got Fall Policy that, that day.
So they offer them that, Darren, instead of putting them in jail, basically, give them a chance to.
So, is there any other business to come before this board today? Hearing none, we are adjourned.